And this city council meeting is hereby called to order. Please join me as we say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mikail.
Here.
Bud Max.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Louisiana's absent.
Boucher.
Here.
Reyes.
Here.
Kohler.
Present.
With six present and one absent, there is a quorum. Uh, first item on our agenda is to approve the city council meeting minutes from July 11th, 2023. Uh, is there a motion to approve those minutes? Thank you Alderman, uh, Mikail for the first and Alderman Bud Max for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions of the minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it and those meetings are, many minutes are approved. Uh, at this time, we're going to have our 2022 audit presentation from McCabe Thorpe. But first I will defer to Finance Director Molly Talkington.
Great. So this is our annual, um, audit presentation. We had our actuarial presentation at the last meeting. And then of course coming right into season is we're following with our budget. But with those three things, we always do our GFO awards. We did receive the triple crown again for our 2021 year. Um, so we're continuing down that path and I'm sure you'll hear all the great things we've done with the audit from McCabe.
Thank you.
Awesome. Well, first off, thank you for, for having me, uh, be able to present. My name's McCabe Thorpe. I'm an audit manager with Lauterbach and Ament. Uh, been with LNA for about four years and before that was about, uh, five years in the private sector for audits. So definitely been around, um, and I can say that Rolling Meadows is one of my top favorite clients. Um, to go to Molly and Shelley always have the documentation ready and prepared well in advance. Not only is it prepared, it's well done. They have answers to our questions and a quick and well thought out answer. So. Thank you to Shelley and Molly for another great audit. And a great, so what we're going to start off with is this little big packet. Audit financial report. And to show how great of a success Molly and Shelley are doing, uh, to go to page nine. That is your certificate of achievement for excellence and financial reporting. Uh, so congratulations for receiving that for the 1231, 2021, uh, fiscal year. And then that will go into review again for 1231, 2022 fiscal year. Moving on to page 12. This is your audit opinion. So this is what we present, uh, after going through the audit and the city has received the highest level of opinion, which is an unmodified opinion. What that is essentially saying is throughout our testing, uh, we found that the financial statements were free of material statements. So congratulations again on an unmodified opinion. So now if you flip to page 16. This is the start of the management's discussion analysis, or what we call the NDNA. Um, and essentially what this does is provides more of a narrative format of the numbers, uh, looks at the financial highlights uh, throughout the year and gives it more of a story background, uh, rather than just hard, uh, numbers and facts. And also what, what's great about this section is, so we provide kind of a cookie cutter format, send it to Molly and Shelley. And they're able to go in and add more detail, uh, that's specific for the city, which is kind of great because it allows you to tell your own story. So now flipping to page 37. This is the first of many financial statements that will go to. So this is your balance sheet. Uh, that shows the governmental activities and the business type activities level along with the public library component unit. You flip over to the next pages. This shows the governmental activity and business type activity from a general whole level, uh, for your income statement, your revenues and expenditures. And if you go to the next page, page 41, uh, this is probably what you're most likely, uh, used to seeing. Uh, this shows the funds, uh, broken out, uh, on a balance sheet level. These are the governmental funds. So once again, your assets, liabilities, deferred inflows and your fund balance. And if you go to page 45, this is the income statement, uh, showing at a governmental funds level. And one thing I like to point out here, this is kind of good, uh, data that you can pull is that the general fund uh, saw an increase of about 20% uh, from last year to this year. So I can go fund by fund, even see which funds increased or decreased. Now if we go to page uh, go to page 49 and 50, uh, same type of level. These are, but now these are your business type, your proprietary funds. Um, so these are showing the utilities, uh, refuse collection, and then the, uh, internal ser- service funds. Uh, once again, assets, deferred outflows, inflows, liabilities at business type fund. And then the next page also income statement, business type, uh, funds, revenues and expenditures, so forth, so forth. You'll become experts at financial statement reading by the end of that. So to continue to page 55, uh, this is kind of the meat and potatoes of the audit report. Uh, with these next very many pages, the only detail is the, um, audit mythology that we use to come up with our numbers and also kind of delves into the accounting policy of the city. So I will save everyone's time from jumping into that. Um, and then we will go to what I consider the most important part of audit reports. Page 121. So if you recall, uh, I was speaking back to the general fund increase of about 20%. And what these next few pages that go fund by fund for each page provide is a comparison of what was originally budgeted to what the actual revenues or expenditures were. Uh, so if you're curious to see what caused, uh, certain funds to increase or decrease, this is a great section to go to to see, okay, what did the city project and what actually happened? And so you can kind of drill down, um, and does this specific areas are either higher or lower than expected? So that is it for the audit financial report. I'll pause now if there's any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the city council? Uh, yes, is that Alderman Kohler?
I may have a few questions if we go long, but that last page you just discussed, it seems like the biggest increase in revenues is either governmental?
Yes.
And that is due to?
Uh, so I'll look into that further because it could be a multitude of things, um, for Molly and.
Some of this was, um, like state use and our, I believe, personal property replacement tax. So that one will actually end up talking about more budget because it's been coming in a lot higher than it used to, but there is actually the Illinois Department of Revenue has determined that they allocated it incorrectly and they're fixing it for our 24 budget. So we're going to have more discussion of that. So it's, um, basically what people are spending on the state level is some of those state tier revenues, the state collectives.
So is, this is not really part of this discussion. This is an audit of the past, but
Yeah.
Did anticipate in the future, we're going to pay that level or we're going to revert back to the 4.4?
I think it will probably be above 4.4, um, but there are some, like I said, uh, like the personal property replacement tax will be adjusted back down. So there's going to be some kind of pluses and minuses as we go through.
Any related to either infrastructure or pandemic? That are separate?
Uh, this one, no, the, so the, um, ARBA funding. That revenue will actually be shown, the 3.2 million in the 2023 budget. Because we spent out the funding in 2022, but the receipt of it and everything we have to file with the federal is reported for 2023. So in 2023, we will see that 3.2 million of COVID or well, the ARBA funding revenue that was related to that. So, um, but that was accounted for in the 2023 budget, right? So we anticipated that one time.
At this stage, we don't anticipate any additional COVID related funding to the city that came before the ARBA funds. Is there another question? What? Um, he, he mentioned something about two funds not being audited, which was something of the police fund made in the library.
So police and fire pensions are both audited, um, separately. And then their information is incorporated and same with the library. So the library has another auditor that comes out of there.
Did that look at last time? That, that was an actuary presentation, but that's also audited?
No, the actuarial, so the actuarial is doing one thing. The audit is actuarial is looking forward in a way. Um, the audit is looking at how it performs. So the audit is actually performed on those two funds separately and those figures are incorporated. You see them in here because they're a portion of the city, um, just like the library has the whole separate audit firm. And then, um, because they're a component unit of the city, their information is also included in our audit, but they actually have independent auditor. So for police and fire, Lauterbach actually audits one and Sickich audits the other. And then the information's incorporated into the total.
Can I continue asking questions?
Go ahead.
Yes, you may continue.
I'm looking to who's here. Um, the, I, I think actually, um, the most important part of an audit is your last section, which is the recommendations.
Yep.
And those, so there, can you just tell me who prepared the management response?
I did.
You did. Thank you. Then my last question for right now, and then I'll be quiet. Uh, is addressed to our attorney. It mentions in the audit that there is no expected impact, uh, or legal liabilities that may be against the city. Do we have lawsuits against the city that are currently pending that have the numbers attached to it?
No, i- in preparing the audit, there's an inquiry that's sent to various attorneys that have represented the city on, on matters. And they're required to disclose whether there's any, any pending litigation. So if the audit says that there is none, that is in response to the attorney's, uh, response to the audit request.
And the audit says there is no expected impact on the financials due to litigation, but it doesn't say that there's no litigation.
Correct. You would have to disclose, you would have to disclose, the attorney would have to disclose any pending litigation.
Okay. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Regarding the audit? Nothing? Alright.
And then, uh, we're going on your recommendations. Uh, so yeah, so that's just this little booklet here. Uh, it's what we call the management letter. So, yep, exactly. Uh, these are viewed as two recommendations for the city. Uh, best practices that the city can look at, uh, to, uh, improve on, uh, for next year's audit. Um, so for this year, there were three current year recommendations. Um, and then, uh, there were, uh, five prior recommendations, which, uh, one of them was implemented, which we've, uh, made aware to Molly and she's aware of it, and their comment response is the, uh, city's action plan moving forward. So we look forward to next year's audit then.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions?
Alright, well, if we think of any, then make sure that we, um, touch base with Director Talkington. Thank you very much.
See.
Um, at this point, um, there is no mayor's report this evening. Are there any ward reports? Okay.
Okay. Yes. Today we had, um, the school supply drive, um, for the kids who were at, um, the PNC, but really anyone in Rolling Meadows who was in need. We gave out about 150 to 200 kids worth of back to school supplies. The city drive brought in enough to send 60 of those kids to school with all of their supplies. So thank you to everyone who donated and to city staff who helped, um, while I was absent to, um, collect and get everything organized when it's gone. So I really, really appreciate that. So it was a, it was a big success. So there's pictures and stuff posted. Until later.
Thank you for sharing. Yep. Any other ward reports? Okay. Um, there are no signatories on the sign in sheet for the, um, public meeting. Um, so we will move on to our pending ordinances. And the first item that we have up, uh, this evening for the council's consideration is, um, item A ordinance number 23 dash 37 to adopt the purchasing manual for the city of Rolling Meadows and implementing said purchasing manual and the Rolling Meadows municipal code in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Smooth.
Uh, thank you Alderman O'Brien for the first and Alderman Mikail for the second. Um, is there any discussion? Seeing none, uh, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Max.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Moving on to item B ordinance number 23 dash 38 to amend the city code in order to allow for the city manager's execution of hold crimeless agreements on behalf of the city of Rolling Meadows in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
I'll move.
Thank you Alderman Mikail for the first and Alderman Bud Max for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Max.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item C ordinance number 23 dash 39 to clarify city code prohibitions presenting or pertaining to electronic, electronic sweepstakes machines and establishing specific fines for the related violations in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Smooth.
Thank you Alderman Boucher for this first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Max.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item D ordinance number 23 dash 40 to approve a special use for a drive-through at 1458 Gulf Road, the Chipotle Mexican Grill, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
I'll move.
Thank you Alderman Mikail for the first. Uh, Alderman Reyes for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Max.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item E ordinance number 23 dash 41 to amend the city code to declare obstructive drive-through restaurant queuing to be a public nuisance in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Smooth.
Thank you Alderman Mikail for the first, Alderman O'Brien for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Max.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item F ordinance number 23 dash 42 to amend the zoning map of the city of Rolling Meadows 5100 block of Euclid Avenue, except for 5190 Euclid Avenue in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Smooth.
Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the first.
Okay.
And thank you Alderman Mikail for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Max.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. The next item, uh, on the agenda in, is an ordinance in for the first reading. Item G ordinance number 23 dash 00 to amend Article 5 entitled hazardous spills of chapter 42 entitled fire pre- fire prevention and protection of the code of ordinances city of Rolling Meadows, Illinois regarding liability for payment of costs associated with hazardous spills in for first reading. Is there a motion to consider the ordinance?
Smooth.
Thank you Alderman Mikail for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Yes, Alderman Bud Max.
Um, thank you, Mrs. Mayor. Um, so I, I don't know if this is the correct place to say this, but I don't want to mess with section 42, but under licensing of gas stations, I realize they have to have a business license and there are other places in licensing in Rolling Meadows where you have to have a certificate of insurance or actually for contractor licenses in some cities, you have to name the municipality as an additional insured. So under their liability insurance, so I would recommend under licensing that we make that um, a change to our system as well, as well as this updating chapter 42. I don't think we'd want to do this here per se, but, um, we had it in licensing that we would update it so that you have to have a certificate of insurance and name the city as an additional insured. So that, that way, if, for example, if there was not a responsible gas station owner or the gas station owner went out of business, we would still be able to use their insurance company to cover our costs, um, where we incur any costs.
Okay, so we have a, um, a proposed amendment to the, um, motion that's on the floor.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I, I believe that Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Bud Max, I'm sorry, is recommending this change as it relates to this topic. However, because of the, uh, current ordinance and the topic in this current, current ordinance, it wouldn't be appropriate to actually amend this ordinance. But, um, to take note of the information provided tonight and bring forward a separate ordinance on that issue.
Okay, thank you for the, uh, point of order then. So at this point, it's not a motion that's on the floor, but we do have this on in our meeting minutes, um, for city staff to take a look at our licensing. Um, city staff, did you have any comments at this time regarding the licensing recommendations from Alderman Bud Max?
At this stage, we'll take a look at it and make sure that there's nothing that prevents us from, from doing any of these things under the state statutory requirements related to gas station regulations. And then based on what we are allowed to do, if there's no home rule preemption, we'll bring back an ordinance that takes that exact step.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Bud Max.
For appointment information, like the state regulates certain trades of fire, um, fire alarm contractors, um, elevator contractors. And so we, even though we are state licensed as an elevator contractor or fire alarm contractor, we still had to, we still had to meet individual municipalities' requirements, provide them with certificates of insurance. In some cases, name them, naming them as additional insured, even though we were licensed by the state. So if, in case somebody gives you that argument, you can, there are others who require that anyway.
We'll work with the city attorney. Thank you for the next meeting.
Anything else, Alderman Bud Max?
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion regarding item G? Yes, Alderman Kohler.
This is just for clarification. Is the both amendments response to the spill that occurred this year?
I think it's a general best practice with respect to gas station operations. One thing that came out of this situation was that um, those insurance certificates are held with the office of the state fire marshal, given that they have the regulatory authority over the gas stations. Our licensing requirements locally don't require them to submit any insurance, uh, uh, certificate of insurance with the city named as an additional insured or any sort of requirements of that nature. And so, uh, the, the proposed, uh, ordinance, the requested ordinance by Alderman Bud Max would uh, change the city's licensing code to require that these insurance certificates be provided to the city as part of that licensing application.
In the meeting that we had with residents, I thought I understood that the city already had the right to recoup those associated with this, right?
That is correct.
So then what is, I'm understanding what is different between what we have and what we're opposing?
So it would, as in any other type of scenario in which we would request a certificate, um, if there is a, a spill of this nature, we could go directly to the insurer and submit that claim directly. The, the certificate would already list us as an additional insured. Um, so it would expedite the process in which we can pursue those, that reimbursement. That said, um, there's two components to these kind of situations. There's the, there's the reimbursement that is pursued through the state funds, which is the underground storage tank fund. Um, and then if there was any sort of liability that the city had determined existed with the gas station operator, we could submit separately and pursue additional reimbursement or claims against the gas station operator through that liability insurance policy.
Wait, when did you say? Well, no further questions.
Uh, so, uh, city attorney, I know that you had some additional, uh, information to provide to Alderman Kohler as well.
Yeah, so the ordinance that's presented today is a clarification of the city's, uh, already existing authority with respect to the, um, liability for costs for any hazardous spills on, on a third party and the city's ability to recoup those costs from that third party. So, um, it's basically just clarifying specifically those costs that can be and have that the city already had the right to recoup, clarifies those costs, clarifies existing law and provides some more specifications in the city code on that.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Certainly. Any additional, uh, discussion regarding this item? Okay. Uh, seeing none, the question is, shall this ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Max.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the ordinance will be moved forward for second reading. Uh, for new business, we have item H, uh, which is our payment of bills on warrant for July 25th, 2023. Uh, is there a motion to approve the warrant?
Smooth.
Thank you Alderman Boucher for the first.
Thank you.
And Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Max.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. Moving on to consent resolutions, we have just two items, uh, on the agenda today, items I and J. Does any other person wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for resolution? Okay, seeing none, the chair declares an order for one motion to consider the two resolutions in one motion without the, without debate. Is there such a motion?
Smooth.
Thank you Alderman Mikail for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Uh, our first, uh, res- our first consent resolution is item A, resolution number 23 dash R dash 96 to approve the purchase of chairs for this council chambers from affordable office interiors in a not to exceed amount of $22,680. And item J, resolution number 23 dash R 97, to approve waiving building permit fees for the Rolling Meadows Park District, West Meadows Ice Arena, 3939 Wetteka Avenue. The question is, shall the real, shall the two resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Max.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, those two resolutions pass. Um, at this time, this brings the council to other business and reports. We have no mayoral appointments or proclamations, uh, and no city clerks report. Um, so, uh, at this time, we are going to move on to our city staff reports. Uh, and with that, our community items of interest to city manager Rob Savo.
Thank you, Mayor. A free outdoor ma- uh, free outdoor movies, snacks, fun and games are all happening this Saturday, July 29th, with the Rolling Meadows Police Department. This year's movie night with the cops will feature Minions, The Rise of Gru at 7:00 PM, behind the community center at 3705 Pheasant Drive. The fun continues with the Rolling Meadows Police Department next Tuesday, August 1st, at the annual National Night Out event, also being held behind the community center once again at 3705 Pheasant Drive. This year's highlights include skydivers, circus performers, face painters, safety vehicles, food samples, of course, while supplies last, and more. Make sure to bring your folding chairs because immediately after the event, a full fireworks show will light up the sky. National Night Out is a family-friendly event that brings law enforcement and the community together across the nation. Lastly, the Friday's rock concerts in Kimble Hill Park continue with the popular Rod Tough Curls and the Bench Press headlining on Friday, August 11th at 8:00 PM. Bring your lawn chair and a blanket to enjoy the fun with the opening band, Wood Foot in the Groove, starting at 6:00 PM. For more information on any upcoming city events, please visit, visit the city's website at www.citirm board. That is it for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, for the June 2023 financial report, um, it is in the agenda packet. And if any council member has any questions, please contact Finance Director Molly Talkington. Um, for our August 8th city council draft agenda, uh, I will again defer to city manager Rob Savo.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the draft agenda includes the second read of the hazardous spills item, which was approved on first read this evening. Uh, we'll work once again with the city attorney on the additional item that was requested, uh, tonight. In addition, the draft includes, uh, an IGA with the build of Schaumburg related to the, uh, now completed Quentin Hartong bike path with respect to the ongoing maintenance of that path. Um, and it also authorizes and recommends the authorization of a restaurant incentive for Cafe on the Grove, which is a proposed new breakfast lunch restaurant that's going to be, uh, going into where the former Gus's diner was at 2160 Plum Grove Road. Um, the draft agenda is included in the agenda packet and, uh, given that we're a few weeks away, likely we'll have additional items added to it in advance of that meeting. Um, and will be posted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act prior to the meeting.
Thank you. Um, at this time, are there any matters that are not on the agenda? Yes, Alderman Bud Max.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, I provided the city clerk and the city manager with a petition signed by these 60 members of my ward, asking for the, an ordinance to create a stop sign on Vermont at the corner of Wilson. Um, and because they're concerned about traffic in their neighborhood. And so, um, I provided that and, um, questioning that that be brought forward at an upcoming city council meeting. Um, I realized that requests by the residents may not fall in line with the typical transportation guidelines, but um, they've told me that for a number of times, they've tried to get this accomplished in the past, which was prior to my being in the council. But they, they've convinced me that they really want it and the 60 of them took the time to sign a petition. I, I'd ask the council to seriously consider when it comes before us.
Thank you, Alderman Bud Max. Um, then city staff will then take note, uh, I believe, and work with, and work with you on bringing that back to the council.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, then if nothing else, um, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Smooth.
Uh, thank you Alderman Mikail for the first and Alderman Bud Max for the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it and this meeting is adjourned at 8:00 PM.